This conference will now be recorded.
Billis, we'll take the roll call, please.
Counselor Belt.
Present.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel is absent. Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Coons.
Here, and I'm going to ask our interim city manager to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are once again meeting remotely. There are a few of us here in council chambers and the rest of us via audio or video. And we are live streaming tonight. Hopefully, I think we've got that back on tap for our future meetings. So we'll be able to get the word back out about that. We'll start out tonight with our consent calendar. We have three sets of minutes you had in your package. The minutes of the council meeting of March 31st, the minutes of the council meeting of April 7th, and the special meeting on April 14th. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar or note any corrections.
I move approval of all three sets of minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Silbernagle.
Second.
I'll second.
I'm going to give that to Counselor Belt. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 So noted. Thank you unanimous vote, and we'll move on. Thank you. For the mayor's report this evening, I want to make the announcement that we do have two finalists for our position of the city manager of Monmouth. I want to thank the council for their hard work so far. And now's the time to bring in some other eyes and ears. We have extended invitations, and they have been accepted, to Kenna West. Kenna being the current city manager of Willamina. Prior to that, she has actually been in the Valley area. She has worked at Marion County and also the city of Salem. So she will be joining us next Monday, as will Gary Marks. Gary most recently served as the city manager in Lebanon. He's currently working as an interim public works director for the city of Dallas. And his background is a little bit more of the Wild West. He comes to us from positions in Ketchum, Idaho, as well as Whitefish, Montana, and has done some other work in our area. So we are looking forward to meeting those two. We will start off Monday night, again, sort of virtually for most folks. At 6:00 PM, I will be conducting interviews of each of the candidates, one at a time. We will be over at Western Oregon University. And those interviews will be livestreamed at 6:00 PM. That will be on the woo.edu backslash livestream2, number 2, channel on YouTube. And then also, just on the Internet, and then also on WIMPIC, on Easy Video Channel number 21, the WIMPIC channel, it will also be livestreamed there. We are asking folks in the community who would like to ask questions of our two candidates to submit those to Chad Olson by noon on Monday. He will compile them for us. And his email address will be posted on the website and our social media. It's C Olson, O L S E N, at CI dot Monmouth dot OR dot US. And he'll compile some questions, and I'll throw in a few of my own. And we'll have a chance to at least virtually get to meet our candidates. Unfortunately, with our current social distancing requirements and the amount of people who can gather, we can't really hold a traditional meeting. So hopefully, we'll have some tough questions, as well as maybe some fun ones that can help us get to know our two candidates. Then on Tuesday, which is the 29th, 28th, our city department heads will be able to interview each candidate. And then we will have a community leadership panel. Some of our local leaders in the community will get a chance to ask their questions and get to know the candidates. And council will have an open interview again with each of them. Those interviews will take place in person. We have very large rooms at Western Oregon University. The Columbia Room, which is in the lower level of the Warner University Center, and also the Willamette Room. So we'll be able to keep two groups going at once, having those interviews. We will then have opportunities to hear from the department heads, as well as our community leadership panel, giving us feedback. And we will then be able to deliberate in executive session while we have dinner Monday night, or Tuesday night. So be prepared for that. We'll get information out to council and hopefully find someone who is the right fit to get us through this and out the other side and start our recovery for our community. Going to be a lot, a lot of heavy lifting still ahead. I'm happy to report that when asked, when Chad was asked how long he was going to be here, the last time, he said, "Well, until we get someone." He'll stick it out with us, and hopefully, we'll be able to make a decision for all. You have a question?
Will this schedule and the details of the schedule be available to us in writing? Because I only heard about half of what you said.
Sure. Yes, actually, that's, yes, council will get that all. I just kind of want to get this out here if folks watch this video or get a chance to check in later. We've got it. You will be getting an actual schedule saying where we're supposed to report at the time. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll talk more a little bit about that at the end of our session tonight as a group. So that is my report for the moment. And again, I will ask each of you if you have anything to report. I know Counselor Lopez, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you've been listening in on the League of Oregon Cities calls that happen once a week. And I don't know if others of you have. But Chris, maybe you can report a little bit about that kind of information that is being given to all of us through our professional association, the League of Oregon Cities.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to present a report from the League of Oregon Cities calls. Little bit of background on these calls. They are organized by the League of Oregon Cities, which we are a member of. And they also have members from, my apologies, Mayor. I believe that I am getting a lot of feedback. Do you all hear that? Okay, I think that's better. Excellent. Apologies for that. So the League of Oregon Cities call that our mayor was referring to is a weekly call that's hosted with a number of other state entities, namely, the governor's office, the Oregon Health Authority, as well as others as are able. We've had speakers speak from the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs in Washington DC and other interested parties to try to coordinate the effort in the response to the coronavirus need. There's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of unforeseen challenges. And, you know, these are really informational sessions. There are opportunities for questions to be raised, whether those are questions specific to, you know, community needs or questions specific to, you know, things like budgeting. And these are real valuable channels of information, moving in both directions. This next call will be at the end of this week. And I've really learned a lot from them. Just like anything, the information that's given those calls changes quickly. So at this point, everything from last week's call is, for the most part, out of date. But it's wonderful to see that level of cooperation and coordination. I'd also like to mention that there are national calls that are less interactive, which are being held by the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. And I've had the opportunity to make one or two of those as well. And I just, all I can say is that there are a lot of people working very hard to try to craft answers for questions that we don't even have yet. You know, so trying to not only meet the needs of today, but look forward into the needs of, you know, what a few weeks from now, a few months from now, or even years from now could look like. So there's a lot of good work going on out there. And I'm happy to represent Monmouth on those calls.
Great, thank you. Yes, those are very valuable, and both from a national, regional, and local perspective. I know each of us is involved in other things related to response to the coronavirus. Does anyone else have a report on that? Anything that you've been engaged in or involved in that you can report on? All right, yes, and I will recognize Counselor Lopez again.
One other piece that I have is in regard to MINET. If this is an appropriate time for updates on boards and commissions.
That's exactly where I was going next, so thank you, yes.
Fabulous. So MINET, as with the city, has been making plans to find a way to move the budgeting process forward. And we have now set a date of our budget meeting, which is, so my apologies. There we go, May 21st, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. This meeting will be held virtually, much in the same way that our meetings held tonight, although on a different platform called Google Meets, which I'm not as familiar with. But we are moving forward with that process, and it's nice to have a path. In addition to that, you know, MINET is standing by their policy of no disconnects. So regardless of, you know, reason, we are not disconnecting anyone during this crisis, much the same as the other city services. And I have actually a little video that I'd like to share with council that MINET has put together regarding the current state of affairs. Janet, are you able to share that for me?
I am, just a second here.
Excellent.
Do you guys see the go-to-meeting piece? Okay, trying to figure out how to. There. Shouldn't preview there.
Janet, if you'd like to pass presenting role to me, I'd be happy to share my screen.
Okay, it might load faster, but I can probably pass. Yeah. You should have controls now, Chris.
Okay. All right. There we are. And I would like to pause this for a moment on, there we go, on this screen here. So protective measures, so these are all items that MINET is doing, are all measures that MINET is undertaking to be able to, A, provide, continue to provide excellent service, and B, safeguard the public and their own staff. So offices are temporarily closed, but if anybody does have issues or questions, their phone lines are open. They still have their customer service representatives answering the phones. Payment drop boxes are available. If you do pay via check or directly, you are able to leave payments in drop boxes as opposed to going in and interacting. And they are continuing to serve outages and troubleshoot issues that might arise regarding connectivity. At this point, there are a lot of people that are working on, you know, working on a remote basis, doing telework, accessing budget meetings, just like we are, or connecting with family. And MINET understands the importance of keeping those connections stable. And so we are still operating responses within 24 hours, oftentimes much more quickly. I will also mention that, and this is something from one of the calls that I was on, is if at all possible, if you're scheduling meetings or scheduling events online that will use the phone, use the Internet, I highly encourage you to schedule those meetings at times that are not right on the hour or on the half hour. This does a lot to help reduce the load of our national phone system and just general Internet across the nation. And so, you know, a lot of people, I know that I have 9:00 AM meetings every morning. If you're able to push some of those meetings to 10:00 after or, you know, 9:40 instead of 9:00, that really will help to do a lot as we all find ways to operate in this new world.
Great, thank you, Chris, for that. And we'll give the controls back to Janet. And are there any other reports from boards or commissions? John, Carey.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the planning commission met on April 15, and fairly limited business, thankfully, because it was their first online meeting, which actually went pretty well. Suzanne had it set up nicely, and it worked well. But the primary agenda item was to grant a flight variance in the sign code for Roth's Fresh Markets, and that was approved. So that's going to free up them to do some, the signage like they would like. We have a couple more, I believe they're design reviews that are on the way, which will suggest that there's construction going to be starting fairly quickly. Taco Bell, Starbucks, and O'Reilly Auto Parts sort of are the next up. And I know we're going to be talking later in the agenda about tractor supply, but they're going to be open ahead of Roth's. And they're really not too far away, I don't think. So anyway, it was our first video meeting, and it went pretty darn good. But that's it, unless there's any questions.
Great, thank you for reporting on that, John. Anybody else? I did see, unfortunately, the library has announced the cancellation of the Wine Poetry event. And this year, our guest was to have been Oregon's poet laureate, Kim Stafford. Father William Stafford was also a poet laureate for the state. So would have been a terrific program, and I'm sure we can try to get him back next year. But another one of those events that somehow we might have hoped against hope we would be able to hold, and we aren't going to be able to. All right, seeing no other comments at that, we will turn to Chad Olson, the city manager's report.
City Council FY21 priorities. The departments are continuing to do a great job under the circumstances. The police department is, they are continuing to do the script program that they started. They're also aware that with the business closings, they have increased patrol as it relates to the downtown business district and the different commercial properties around town. Public Works is doing a great job doing their work with the streets and water and sewer and maintaining social distancing. With Public Works and Power and Life, the police department, our big worries have been, because they have to work occasionally within close quarters. So we were nervous about being able to maintain the physical distancing, but they've done a good job with that, so I'm really pleased with the outcome. And other than that, I think, you know, we're just keeping our fingers crossed as far as the flattening the curve. The state looks to be doing a good job keeping that things under control. It will, kind of the downside of flattening the curve is spreading, is pushing it out for a longer period of time. So hopefully, sometime within the next four weeks, I think we'll start to slow walk out whatever the future will look like at that point. So that's all I have with just the general report. Are there any questions before I pivot over to the priorities? Okay, great. Well, as far as the priorities, first, I'll apologize for not having these back to you sooner. My schedule was hijacked by the virus. And I think as we have started to become a little bit more used to the routine and having some of our systems in place, I'm able to pick up some of the special projects that I've been working on. So tonight, I wanted to review this with the council. And the caveat on, caveat for this is, these are the council's priorities. So I'm just presenting them to you. Feel free to make any adjustments. As far as the priorities, you can move priorities up and down. I did highlight the ones, anything that scored three or higher, I did move those into the priority list that would move on to next year, which were eight in total. So if you look at the two exhibits, the first exhibit looks at the ranking by goal. So if you remember during your goal-setting session, we had these categories. I refer to them as buckets, but they're overarching goals. Collaborate, communicate, strategic growth, city projects, city services, financial resources. Which was the last.
Nope.
Oh, yeah, and then there was another, other category that a few items dropped into. So you can see the scoring for each of those goal categories. And then over on exhibit two, you can see the highest-scoring priorities regardless of the goal category. So you can see the eight goals that I placed above the line are the communications plan, onboarding the new city manager, affordable housing, cost versus revenue, the city hall project, economic development plan, five-year plan, and estimate or establish designated levels of service. I typically just refer to that one as the level of service. Before we move over into the descriptions of those, you'll notice for those items that are below the line that goes across, there's quite a few of those that would be, just by the nature of the priority, they would be incorporated into some of the other priorities that did make the cut, so to speak. For example, the city council pound halls, that would be part of your communication plan.
Chad, Chad, if I, can I interrupt for just a second here? Are you using your regular microphone? Or the microphone? Because I can't hear.
Yeah, we are kind of, we're doing a hybrid thing, partly. We have to have one microphone for the livestream and one for the other. Hang on just a second. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
Chad.
Can you hear me, Dr. Sharmar?
Yes, I can hear you, Chad, thanks.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Every week, we learn something new, don't we? Well, what I was saying is, so out of the eight priorities that are highlighted in green, which were the, I guess, the highest-scoring priorities, the ones below that, what I was saying is, a number of those will be incorporated just by the nature of those priorities. They'll be incorporated up into the other ranking priorities. And I was, a couple examples were the city council town halls, that would be part of your communication plan. Community engagement would be part of your communication plan. Streets and sidewalks would become part of your levels of service. And I'd say there's probably 10 or so down below that, just by the nature of those priorities, will be folded into the ranking priorities, if that makes sense. So with that, what I did was I took the ranking priorities and I put a description to those, an anticipated outcome or deliverable, the assignment, and a. So Janet and I will, if, if the ranking priorities are approved by the City Council, we, we will sit down and look at those in greater detail for, for their budget. The other comment I'll make about the ranking priorities is, these do not, at this time, include strategies or initiatives that would be part of implementing the priorities. Again, we want to get through the council's review, modification, or approval before we start devising strategies or initiatives to achieve those. So that being said, I'll walk, I'll walk through these fairly quickly. You've had time, hopefully, to take a look at those. So the first one is the communication plan, and that would be your highest scoring priority. Had 16 total points, three stars. By far and away, it was your highest ranking priority. That is to develop a communication strategy to enhance the city's communication with residents and businesses in the city amonment and the region. So while there's, I like to think of, you have internal communications, external communications with your customer base, but you also have communications outside of your city where you do want to have, be a participant in your, in your region. So with that, there would be, the outcome would be a communications plan with stated goals, strategies, and initiatives. And the idea is to have that prepared and back to the council by the end of the first Second highest was onboarding the new city manager. So this is a, a practice basically of socializing new executives that come into an organization, or in your case, the city amonment with the next city manager. And this one will develop a, a strategy to introduce the city manager to the organization and the community so that they can most effectively meet the council's priorities and the organization's goals. So with this one, I do think that it would, before you start developing the strategy, it would be good to get the city manager on board so that they can be a participant with that. Some of it includes professional development, so attending the League of Oregon City Conference or whatever that will look like this year, as well as meeting the different stakeholders in the community and things like that. Affordable housing was.
I think, Chad, I want to make one comment about that, because I know this is an issue we've all talked about, and that is also determining how we're going to evaluate the city manager. I'm sure Mr. Carey particularly wants me to mention that for him, that that's going to be a really important part of the process.
Thank you.
Sheesh, you want to say that again? That broke up a little bit.
Yes, I was saying that part of that, I think an important part of that is determining how we want to evaluate the city manager, that we were, we know that that is something that we have been wanting to look at anyway, so I want to make sure that gets memorialized here.
Correct, I'll add that in for the city manager's evaluation. That'll, again, will probably be a collaborative process between the City Council and the next city manager. The third item is affordable housing. Talks to the, developing a strategy, providing a mixed, mixed income housing in the community. The outcomes include some work with the city zoning and subdivision ordinance, and then exploring other opportunities to work with stakeholders to ensure that you have a, a range of housing. So it's not all just $300,000 and above, but you try to get something that's a little bit less than that. And that's, the nice thing is, that would tack on to the housing needs analysis that was done by Suzanne. So the fourth one, which Janet appreciates, because she's working hard on it, is the cost versus revenue. So looking at the city's long-term costs versus the city revenues, and kind of the visuals that you think of as the, having your revenue and expense lines, and ensure that they complement each other and they're not going in different directions. So Janet worked to kind of talk a little bit about the various factors that have a lot to do with the expenses as it relates to personal service costs. And so for this one, it would be the general fund, street, building, sewer, water, electric, and stormwater. And we've included stormwater even though at this point, the City Council hasn't adopted the utility. So that you can see the five-year trajectory, sorry, of revenues and costs for that. Also, work to develop some performance measures and include a, a employee classification and compensation survey. So that last one is something that cities typically like to do about every five years, and that's been about as long as, since the city amonment has done its last, classification and compensation assessment. City Hall project, so we all know what that one is. The one correction, after I put a placeholder number in for the, I was thinking of just the final design. I did get the numbers from FFA for what it would take to work towards actual construction. And the total cost to include the design, construction documents, and the bidding process is, the total is $410,000, which is approximately, not including construction admin, so that would be after construction starts. So the total comes out to about seven and a half percent. So I thought that as a percentage of the total project, using the $7.5 million as a rough figure, I thought it was a pretty good percentage as it relates to that. But that number will be updated to be $410,000. And I did talk to FFA about that. What this would do is take you through June 30th, and the idea is that you would be able to complete your bidding process if the council sometime this summer decided to pull the trigger and move forward on the project. The idea would be to try to get to, out to, by June 30th, 2021. The sixth item is to develop a five-year economic development strategy, a plan, something to do with your economic opportunities. This could be anything from you're looking at Oregon Main Street to developing a strategy for small business retention, which is certainly appropriate given the environment, expansion, and support of your business community. So that would be something to, to work on next year. The development five-year plan, so I, I did talk to Counselor Schinkel about this one. It was in the moment, as I jokingly said, in the moment, I'm sure I, I knew exactly what that was, but afterwards, I said, what, what was that one exactly? So what we would do is take all of your forecasting documents, including your capital improvement plans, your utility work that Deb Glardy is currently doing, and the fund forecasting that Janet's doing, and we would roll those all into an aggregate, a composite type of report. So the council could pick one, a single report up and, and see all of your different planning documents over the next five years. And finally, the last one has to do with the establishing designated levels of service. I did tell the mayor and Janet that this one would be by far your most difficult and aggressive of your priorities. Certainly, it's the hardest priority that you have on your list. It's something that I would, if, if I were going to be here, I would, I would think of it as a multi-year effort. It's going to be, you're going to have to work with staff for training, and probably pick some, a few low-hanging fruits. And the example that I, I used is, say with your streets, your street fund, you'll have, you have an asphalt inventory, so the Public Works Department has that for its street. What you want to do is take that and convert it over to what's called a pavement condition inventory, or index, a TCI. So it gets a rating that you can adjust each year based upon the investment that you want to put into the street. If the city determines that a 75% rating is sufficient, then your future investments will be based upon maintaining a 75% rating. If you said, we could live with 70%, so your investment would change based on that, that would be the type of targeted investment to maintain a designated service level. That being said, that's the easiest one that I can use to explain. It gets, it gets much harder as you move on. It did include, one of the, for the outcomes is to include some professional development, some training in-house for the department, as far as lean management principles and practices. So lean management is kind of the old Edward Deming, continuous improvement, performance management effort. It's real common, currently is being implemented quite a bit at the state level. I would think that as you work towards your level of service, you're going to want to emphasize your performance measures, and I think having some training with your staff as, as far as the lean management principles would be a good effort to help do that. But again, by far, this is your hardest priority, it's a multi-year priority. It's not going to be a quick, easy thing, but I think without a doubt, it's, it is something that every city should be working on, and there's no reason not to do it. Just a little bit more, it's more difficult, it's, it's a little harder for the department. Some people really understand it easier than other folks because of the complexity. So that's all I have. And the reminder is, this is, this is the council's priorities, so you can move these around, you can adjust the description, you can include additional outcomes, or remove some that I, I proposed.
John?
It, it strikes me, I have two comments. One, after what your, your long and encouraging description of number eight, Chad, you know, I mean, that really drives about half of the ones above that. I mean, I don't know how we can do a five-year plan without knowing what our level of service is. I don't know how we can, we can, I mean, despite Janet's ability to detail costs and revenues, we can't do that without, without, I mean, that is dependent upon some sort of a level of service. And if it's as onerous as you, as you think, then I'm wondering if we wouldn't be ahead to, you know, when we get our new, when we get our new city manager on board, we might want to sort of go through the process with them and see what their take is, and see whether or not, you know, how, how they would put their spin on. I, I have a clear understanding of what yours is, Chad, but I'm, I'm, I mean, that seems to be one of the things we need to do, we need to do it first. We don't have time to do it first right now. And given that, we might want to wait, in my mind, until we get a new person on board and sort of walk through it with them. So, you know, there, there's a lot that seems to be sort of, you know, the cost-revenue thing, that's the, the five-year plan, and almost is pretty closely linked. And I wonder if we couldn't collapse, and I would be for, at the moment, eliminating number eight, but that's just my two thoughts.
Thank you, John. Yes, as a reminder, these goals would start July 1. That's, that's the planning framework. It's merely an opportunity to get some input into the budgeting process at this point, but these would be our 19, 20, 21 goals. And we had talked about not really firming them up till we had someone else on board to be able to make sure that that person has, has the perspective we need. So with those caveats, other questions or comments at this point?
So just a comment, based on Counselor Carey's comments, and I, I appreciate that. The, as I said, I, I was not trying to sugarcoat it. It's, you know, working on performance management initiatives, continuous improvement, lean management principles. This is, it's a whole, it's a whole world of, of trying to develop metrics to measure your service levels that you're providing, so that you can tie those in to what your customer base wants, and to have clarity that you're providing, you're providing the services that they want. This brings clarity to, to all of that. And again, I'm, you know, I'm just geeky enough to, to enjoy it. So, but I do agree, you need to have somebody that has, if not the, the experience, but the, the interest and the capacity to pick that up and run with it. But I do think that, based upon the discussions that I've had with the council and listening to the council talk over the past six months, I do believe that the council is interested in this type of effort. But I certainly agree with your comments.
So I think maybe for sort of a second draft, and again, as we, if we want to put these all into budget planning, knowing that maybe four and seven really become one thing, the cost versus revenue and the five-year plan, that's, that's really two five-year plans, right? And then knowing that the level of service isn't something we're going to maybe accomplish, but determining if that is a study we want to undertake and put some place, plans in place for the professional development. I agree with Chad, having been through lean manufacturing in the food processing industry, it is a lot of training and shifting of your thinking to be able to understand how, how do I approach any operational issues with that new thinking? So I think we could certainly put it in the goals for next year and, and get a starting place of training. Other than that, I think they look great. That would bring us sort of down to seven goals. People comfortable with moving forward in, in that framework, even though we're not really going to formally adopt these, I guess, quite yet? I see no objections, and I see, yes, John?
Just quick, I, I'm all for moving them forward. You know, I, I think that before we, you know, and we'll have time, but we really need to spend some time, all of us, looking at, at how they, how, how, we would all suggest they be tweaked a little bit. I think they're all, what we've talked about, and they're all good, but I think they could use a little more massaging and, and, and just, you know, just work it a little bit more before we finalize off on them. But we're in a good, good spot now.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Yeah, we definitely need to also get Byron's input, because some of this wording comes from him.
need to spend some time, all of us, looking at, at how they, how, we would all suggest they be tweaked a little bit. I think they're all, what we've talked about, and they're all good, but I think they could use a little more massaging and, and, and just, you know, just work it a little bit more before we finalize off on them. But we're in a good, good spot now.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Yeah, we definitely need to also get Byron's input because some of this wording comes from him, and so we, we're not prepared to adopt anything formally at this point, and the massaging and tweaking will be helpful to, to do with our, with our new city manager. So I think it gives you an idea of how to move forward to the next steps.
So I'll take these, I'll incorporate some of the comments that I heard tonight, massage them a little bit, probably with number eight or the new number seven. We'll maybe tone it down a little bit to be more of an introductory to this different level of service thinking, and then send it out separate and ask for each of the counselors to send some feedback to me and provide the massaging. Because again, it's really the council's priority, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. So we move on to our next quarter of business, which, yep? Oh, so I'm going to turn my mic off, damn it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is going to be interesting because there's an echo, but I will try to be cohesive. Honorable council members, you have before you my third quarter financial and investment report, what a difference three months makes. The COVID-19 has had some impacts, fortunately not as badly as some other entities are experiencing. But you will see that the format that I used the previous quarter, I, I stuck with that because I had no time to come up with anything more as well. I didn't necessarily get any additional feedback from you of things you'd like to see. However, I did get some, and I will try and incorporate that for the next, the next quarter, for the final quarter. What I'd like to focus on is the one that has the green and the yellow on it, fortunately still no red, but just briefly go down that. I'm hoping everyone had a chance to look at it. Not a lot of changes in property taxes, still very positive. We do anticipate that folks may have problems paying some of their property taxes. However, a lot of that is protected by the, the lean process, so I'm not worried in the long term that we will collect our property taxes this year. Next year might be a whole different story. State shared revenues, I actually moved from a watch status to a positive status because we are already seeing an uptick. I don't know if you've seen the lines around the block at the marijuana shops, but I think the liquor stores are also enjoying a fairly good custom and, you know, they say that sin taxes thrive in these, this type of an economy, which is an interesting situation. So I do anticipate that we will hit our, our budget and possibly a little better for state shared revenue. Franchise fees, on the other hand, I am now, where I wasn't before, a little more nervous because we are seeing that some of the utilities are, you know, not doing their disconnects, waiving fees, looking at different payment forgiveness schemes, and so those revenues may be going down a little. As such, the franchise fees follow the gross revenues. So I am watching that carefully. I, I think we will still achieve, based on my estimates of what I'm seeing so far, I think we will achieve fairly close to our budget this year on that, but it's one that I want to keep an eye on. Fines and forfeitures remain a watch from the standpoint of, you know, there's only so much we can do about fines and forfeitures, but because it's, we're, we're enforcing the law and getting ticket monies as they, as we get ticket monies, and that has been trending down for some time anyway. And now in the current environment, where we're trying to be kinder and gentler, I think that we're, again, and trying to keep social distancing between our public safety folks and our, perhaps our speeders, that is a challenge. So we're not seeing as much revenue there, and I don't anticipate seeing a lot through the end of the year. Your departments are still doing a good job of balancing and being fiscally prudent within their expenditure budgets, so I have no concerns there through the end of the year. Building fund and street fund have not changed much from last month. Tourism is another one that I have switched to a watch, whereas it was going along beautifully. Now I don't anticipate seeing much, if anything, in the fourth quarter as far as hotel revenues, let alone hotel tax revenues. So that number you'll see when the budget comes out is, has been marked back quite a bit. So obviously we'll have less money in the general fund too from the 30% transfer of tourism monies, but it's, it's not a lot of money to us, I guess, is the, is the upside of that. It's not the bulk of what we depend on for our, our particular reserves. So that's maybe the good news, not so good news for our hotels and, and bread and breakfast in town. The next one, I have had mine at on a watch, as you know, because they gave a smaller contribution in the fall, and they had every intention and it looked like they had every ability to make the projected payment, larger payment in the spring. Now that is not looking like the case, and we'll be talking a little later about adding from the reserve to supplement their payments because they have had some challenges with not being able to go into folks' homes to install their internet in Dallas, for example, which is what they were counting on some of their revenues for. So, so that is one that I'm not, still not extremely concerned about, but I think it is worth you being aware of, that we will probably have to backstop their debt service payment by about $25,000 more than we anticipated. And so that will be a power and light, hopefully a power and light transfer that will still be recorded as a short-term receivable, and they will owe us that money with the other amounts that they owe us that Power and Light has thus far backstopped. For the utilities, I have the same concern that I mentioned in the franchise fees. I'm still showing them as positive because I, I don't see a huge downturn in them. We, we did waive fees, and that's a surprising amount of money that we do typically collect every month, but again, not something that I want us to count on. So we're, we are kind of keeping track of where we are, and we're encouraging people to continue, from our utility standpoint, continuing to make payments or partial payments as they're able so that the balances don't become unmanageable, but we are not disconnecting and we are not charging fees. So for now, I would say those are positive. And I think the only other thing I would mention or highlight is on your investment, our interest earnings page is at the, the last page, you will see that interest earnings are still staying up a little bit, but the LGIP, our, our local government investment pool, has dropped again and is following the market, and we do anticipate that it will continue to drop, although it is lagging the market, which is nice. So we are still getting around $30,000 a month, but by year-end, I don't think we will meet the revenue targets that we had for interest revenue, and thus the allocations to funds will be lower as well. I think that's it unless anyone has any questions.
Coral?
I have a quick question. Janet, I know you don't have a crystal ball, and can you hear me? You don't have a ball, and I know you're not a, an economist, but in terms of water and electricity power here in Monmouth, if the, the national or even the global economy were to tank, would we, would the residents of Monmouth still be in pretty good shape in terms of power and water? Oh, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I, I unmiked myself, I muted myself so that I could hear you.
We, I know we get our water from the well.
My, my crystal ball is that you'll be fine, that we'll be fine, because I do think that we have a very stable utility structure here, and we have, you know, very reasonable rates that we're looking at trying to stay in compliance with our, our needs, and I, I'm not terribly worried about, about our situation financially for our utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions? All right, thank you, Janet. As you mentioned, we've got a, we do have an agenda item coming up to talk about a slight adjustment to that budget. But at this time, we do have time reserved for citizen comments. We have no one in the room with us. Phyllis or Chad, did we receive any written comments for tonight's meeting?
Not that I'm aware of. Phyllis?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. So no citizen comments this evening, and that moves us to our business agenda. Our first item on that agenda is an agreement with Ash Creek Station. Chad or Suzanne?
Well, this one, the Public Works Director, Russ Cooper, I'll just, I'll just introduce it and then turn it over to Russ. White Oak Development is the developer of the, the project out there, and one of the conditions of approval included the construction of the detention facility. And as it turns out, and this was mentioned earlier, Tractor Supply is getting ready to request their certificate of occupancy, but the stormwater detention facility is not quite finished yet. So the developer requested the city to consider a, receiving a cash bond in lieu of that being completed, and Russ and the city attorney worked to prepare that for tonight. So Russ, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, thank you, Chad. I don't have a whole lot more to add to that other than the, the developer has reviewed the agreement and finds the conditions acceptable. As, as a condition of the agreement, the developer would deposit with the city a, a financial security that would provide the city the means to complete construction of that stormwater facility should the developer fail to do so. The developer is willing to provide the city with a cash deposit equalling 150% of the costs remaining to complete the facility. I'll, I'll note that this agreement does not relieve the developer of their environmental responsibility to meet water quality requirements placed on them through their DEQ 1200C construction permit. And then I would also say that with this nice stretch of weather that we've had recently, the developers has been able to accomplish a significant amount of the remaining work. It's possible that they will be done with construction activities on the stormwater detention facility prior to Tractor Supply's request. If that's the case, the city would not implement the attached agreement, but as a kind of a safety net, we've, are going through this process to make sure that if, if needed, that we could do that. So I have included in your, in my staff report to propose motion for your consideration and would be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Yeah, I think it looks great. They have been filling it up, they've got the rock in, they've got all the planting done, and today I saw a fence post going up. So yes, it's possible they would have this done before we even get to this point, but certainly going to be a nice-looking addition on, right in the corner of the curve. And I think Byron actually just let us know that he is waiting to join us.
He should be, he should be calling in.
Ah, because of the executive session or the, yeah, we added a new agenda with the correct call-in.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if he has it or not. He's just, he said it was going to take him a couple minutes.
Okay, all right. So we're going to go ahead, we're not going to wait for Byron on this item. So questions of Mr. Cooper? John, Carey?
Is there, I didn't see a date by which they will complete. I mean, I'm all for this, but, but is there a date that they, they need a little extension until such time, or is this, this until they get around to it?
I am looking real closely here. I thought we had an August, August 1st. Yeah, it, in, in section one, at the, the last, or saying to the last sentence in section one.
It's on the second page, under the actual agreements section of the agreement at the bottom, as we say, the second, the last sentence in number one, by nothing later than August 1st.
Yeah, okay, I, I didn't see that, but that's fine. So we do have that. And then what is the, should we hook, get, get Tractor Supply hooked up, you know, their, their parking lot is functioning on, it, it, it sounds like the, the system is working right now, is that correct? And, and the only thing that they, they need is, is Tractor Supply can't go live until, until, you know, we're, we're done. But if we get a big rainstorm tomorrow, that water is going to run in there, right?
That's correct. And the contractor through the entire project, basically as soon as that hole was dug, has had a supplementary or a secondary treatment system that's there where they collect the water, stormwater, treat it, and then discharge it to the, to the city's system. And that was a, a treatment system that was approved by DEQ as an interim measure.
Does that, does that deal with sediment as well?
That does, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, John. Yeah, Byron, in case you haven't been able to tell, we are actually on our first business agenda item, the Ash Creek Station Improvement Agreement. And does anyone have any other questions for Russ Cooper? Seeing there is a motion in our packet to move this forward, and I would entertain that motion or another at this time.
I move to authorize interim city manager Olson to sign the Ash Creek Station Agreement for improvements on behalf of the City of Monmouth.
Thank you, Darren. And the second, you can just raise your hand and I'll identify you for the record, Byron Schinkel, for the second, thank you. And no further discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? I don't believe so. I saw your mouth move in favor. So Phyllis will record that as a unanimous guidance and direction to Chad to complete this agreement at Ash Creek Station and get Tractor Supply open. So thank you very much. We now have ready to bear fruit to a lot of labor, our Park Master Plan. And so Chad or Suzanne?
Suzanne, go ahead.
Okay, well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Yes, in your packet you have a staff report this evening to adopt the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This has been a project that we've been working on with the Parks and Rec Board for the last about year and a half now. There was a council work session in January to review the draft plan. If you'll remember, the project consultant, Steve Do with Conservation Techniques, came in and presented that report. This is a project that's partially funded by an Oregon Parks grant, and it's an update to our 2008 plan. That's the last time the city did a Parks Master Plan, and since then we've completed most of the projects in that plan. So we're, we're in due for this update to have an updated list of projects and move our Parks and Rec program forward for the next 10 years. So the recommendation by the Parks and Rec Board is to adopt the Parks and Rec Plan. It's referenced or attached to Resolution 1897 that's in your packet. There have been a few changes made since your January work session, I just wanted to point out. We did, staff worked with the consultants to update the capital improvement plan. It was initially done as a six-year plan, pretty aggressive from what we thought we'd actually be able to realistically accomplish. So, we stretched that a little bit further to a 10-year plan, which is a little more typical for these Parks and Rec plans. We also bundled some of the projects together where we thought it would make more sense to construct multiple projects in the same park, just to save some of the staff time and administration have a little bit more efficiencies there. So, need some adjustments to that. Also adjusted some of the project cost estimates. Few of them were a little bit low from what the research we had done. For example, the skate park that we knew that estimate was higher. So, we did make some tweaks to that. But other than that, everything stayed the same. The next step is if this is adopted, we'll need to update our parks' system development charge fee. That's a fee that we charge for new developments that helps us pay for this wonderful list of improvement projects that we want to accomplish. So, you'll be seeing that in the probably upcoming next fiscal year, the summer, to get that updated. There's a sample motion in your packets, the bottom of the staff report page. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the plan.
Thank you, Suzanne. Yeah, a lot of work and a great plan, a great opportunity for us to think to the future. We are talking about levels of service and long-range planning. Any questions? Yep.
Entertain a motion?
Let Councilor Schinkel ask his question first, and then I will. Thank you.
Suzanne, does part of that SDC, can you use those SDC funds to fund the skate park? Because it's part of the master plan? Or to partially fund the skate park?
So, system development charge fees by statute have to be used for creating projects, park projects, that create new capacity. And so, since we have an existing skate park, we'd only be able to count a portion of the skate park project that's expanding the capacity. So, I think our skate park now, and Russ can correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like we would be doubling it with the proposed projects. So, we could fund potentially a portion of the skate park expansion project with SDCs, but not, definitely not all of it. And frankly, we don't have that much, you know, usually your park SDCs, right, you want to kind of spread the level a little bit on those. I don't know that we would drain them all for one project anyway. That's kind of a policy choice. But yeah, does that answer your question about being partially eligible?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Chris, whoop head.
And this is, this is a comment more so than a question, but I just couldn't help but, but notice in the park conditions assessment, this is on page 89. Going along our park conditions, most of the parks look to be in fairly good condition with the glaring exception of ADA compliance. Out of our multitude of different parks, there are only two that were rated as being in in good shape regarding ADA compliance. All remaining parks were listed as fair or poor. So, not that, not that I have any, you know, anything that needs to hold this process up today, but just wanted to highlight that as we consider our park needs for the future.
Thanks, Chris. And again, those would not be eligible expenses under the system's development charges. Those would be either grant-funded or general-funded, I think. So, those are the things we would be looking for as we move forward opportunities. All right, Oral, I would entertain a motion now. Please, Councilor Sharma.
All right. I move that the council adopt Resolution Number 1897, a resolution adopting the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you. And a second from Councilor Lopez. And any other further questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Oh, it's a roll call.
Do a roll call.
Sounds like everybody said aye already. So, Councilor Lopez?
Aye.
Councilor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councilor Belts?
Aye.
Councilor Sharma?
Yes.
Councilor Schinkel?
Yes.
Councilor Carey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Suzanne, once again, for that. And that's a lot of work last year, but that was a big one. But it has a lot nicer pictures than some of the other ones she got worked on. That's very cool. We have a, now we are actually to the other finance issue, and so we'll have Janet do this again. This is really hard for me, because on this one, I get a net cone no matter what I do. So, I might step away from the thing here while she talks. No offense to any of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the supplemental budget that I brought before you, I talked a little bit about earlier. Essentially, we have a couple of options in order to be able to not break our appropriations that we adopted for this debt service payment. We can use the $200,000 that was set aside for this very purpose, not all of it, just $25,000 of it. We haven't had to touch the reserve in a couple of years, and we actually diminished the reserve because we haven't needed it down to $200,000. So, the $25,000 that we're contemplating taking from that would simply be a transfer effectively from those reserves to give it sufficient appropriations so that Power and Light can do the transfer that they need to do to backstop the payment. And I see a look of consternation on Councilor Schinkel's face because he missed my report. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but essentially, with the financial challenges that Minnet has been having, they are expecting to have a shortfall. It's not even for sure that they will. But they recommended that they might have, that we at least look at about $25,000 to backstop that. So, as I said, one option is to use that reserve. We could also go to the contingencies that we have available in Power and Light. We have plenty of contingencies in Power and Light, but I think that they're putting it back to Minnet to come up with the $25,000 themselves could potentially be more damaging in the sense that that would affect their cash flows to recover from this situation. So, those are your three options, but we do need to have a mechanism to be able to ensure that we pay the debt services, the bottom line. And that debt service falls due on June 1st, so that's why we're bringing the supplemental budget to you now so that we can make sure that Minnet knows what they need to do in order to pay their portion of the proceeds. With that, I would take questions.
Janet, do you know what Independence is doing? Are they kicking in as well? Are they helping out similarly?
Correct. They're doing it for themselves. They have, they will also have a shortfall. I don't, I haven't actually talked to Gloria to find out what their plan is to backstop their shortfall. I think they use their water funds. They don't have electric fund. But I believe that that's the plan. I can check with Gloria and find out, though.
And then, secondly, this $200,000 reserve, this is what it was intended to do, right?
Correct.
So, okay.
Yes, Chris?
Yes. So, for clarity here, this is, this is to defer a shortfall that was a result of a result of not being able to complete installs. And that was propagated by the current crisis, the past couple of months, and then the expected continuation of that through the end of the fiscal year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, this then becomes one of the first material fiscal implications of this COVID crisis for the City of Monmouth?
It is something that we can hang our hats on as far as being something that is an impact where we're having to go to reserves to pay for things, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. And Janet, and I just wanted to confirm because budget law, is it okay to take money out of reserves? I know that's what contingencies are for, but I just want to review that it is all right to take from reserves as well?
It is as a supplemental budget. That's the format. Thank you for asking. Yes, that's why I crafted it as a supplemental budget. We could, we have to state that where the resource is coming from for this unplanned contingency. And that's how we're, we're not actually spending out of the reserve. We will move appropriations. We will create the appropriations and move them to the transfer budget, and then we will transfer from Power and Light to the Minnet Fund in order to pay the debt service.
And we can do that without, this is supplemental, without a hearing?
Correct, because it's, this type of supplemental budget, just like the category change that we're gonna talk about at Urban Renewal, does not require a budget hearing. It only requires a notice, regular notice of your governing board, which we did.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, again, there is a sample motion for the resolution, and we would have a roll call vote on this.
I move that a supplemental budget to use reserves to increase transfer appropriations in the Power and Light Fund as detailed in Resolution 1898 be approved.
Thank you, Councilor Lopez. And a second from Councilor Belts. And any further discussion? All right. Mrs. Bowman, take it away.
Councilor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councilor Carey?
Aye.
Councilor Schinkel?
Yes.
Councilor Belts?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Aye.
Councilor Sharma?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. That's Resolution Number 1898. And at this time, we actually have an Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and so Chad wants to talk.
No, I just want to point out that, so you're going to adjourn this meeting to the Urban Renewal Meeting and then reconvene for executive session as part of this, this meeting?
Yes, that's what I'll do. So, I am adjourning the regular session of the City Council at this time. The council itself will then, after this, go into executive session pursuant to ORF 192-662A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Somewhere else. And I can't find my other citation. Counselor Shutterly?
Yeah, that's ORF 192-662H to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely filed.
Great. Thank you for that citation. I printed it out. It's around here somewhere. Thank you very much. So, we are hereby adjourned from regular session. We will reconvene as the Urban Renewal Agency. And Phyllis, please call roll for the members of the Urban Renewal Agency for this meeting of Tuesday, April 21st.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Dr. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Schinkel?
Here.
Mr. Silvernagle?
Here.
Ms. Belts?
Here.
Ms. Suits?
I am here. And I don't see, again, any citizens in the room to make comments. Did we receive any citizen comments for the Urban Renewal Agency?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Thank you very much. We do have a consent calendar as well for the Urban Renewal Agency. The agency last met on March 3rd. Those minutes were in your packet. And that was also held in executive session as well as some comments. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. All right. Thank you, Mr. Carey. And a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belts. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, as those minutes are adopted, and we do have one item on our business agenda, again, Ms. Channard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this is a year of different things, and we have another supplemental budget for you council, councilor members. This supplemental budget is actually twofold. The first portion relates to some additional consulting and contracts that we've gotten into in order to move our Urban Renewal Agency and district along. And that we've actually engaged in up to $30,000 worth of contracts for some very good work that has already been begun by Tiberia Solutions in working on our financial plan. And also, FFA Architecture has recently been engaged to help with a possible feasibility study for a tenant improvement. Elaine Howard has been put on a retainer of sorts. We're not sure that we will spend these monies this year, but we would like to have the flexibility to do so, and so, some portion of them anyway. And so, we're asking for a supplemental budget for $30,000, and what this does is holds holds complete the $30,000 in facade grants that we had already budgeted, and that there has been some interest in that your community development director has heard from several of our storefronts on Main Street that they might be interested in using those facade grants. So, this just allows that to happen should that move forward before year-end. And in any event, both, you know, all three of these consulting contracts would help us move further along with our, one of the council priorities of urban renewal. So, that's the first part. I don't know if anyone has questions about that piece. Okay, I'll talk about the second part of the supplemental budget, which is actually unusual.
Like John said, a question?
Sorry.
I got a little confused when you began to conflate the facade grant piece of your explanation. piece of your explanation. I didn't quite understand that as it relates to transferring of funds.
Oh, that's a great question, actually. So, so part of the challenge, the reason I'm calling it a supplementary budget, even though it is just a transfer of contingencies, is that we've already used more than 15% of our contingencies for the economic incentive that we ended up passing for the Ass Creek Station system development charges. And so normally, if it's under a 15%, it's just a simple transfer resolution. As soon as you go over that 15%, then any additional contingencies that are drawn on become a supplemental budget. And so that's why it's called a supplemental budget. And again, to the mayor's point earlier, that is permissible with notice of the supplemental, but supplemental budget through a council or a government, governing body in this case, and meeting, which we did. And it is not a true supplemental budget in the sense that we are not creating new appropriations. We are just transferring appropriations from contingencies. Does that make sense?
Except how did it relate to the facade improvement grant?
So in our original budget, we appropriated $30,000 for facade improvement grants. We are looking with these contracts that we've signed up to, that would probably use up about $30,000, and we haven't yet done any facade grants. So we're trying to basically backfill for those consulting contracts, which are, again, very worthwhile, as are the facade grants. If we didn't move ahead with the facade grants, there wouldn't be a need for the supplemental budget. However, the, the two that we're looking at, we don't know how, the facade grants, we don't know exactly how much they're going to total, and we'd like to leave that set of appropriations whole. I hope I didn't muddy the water by mentioning that, but I just wanted to make sure that we understood that there was sufficient appropriations currently unless we spend both, on both types of spending.
Yeah, I, I, the, it was clear when we were talking about the need for the consultants, it did muddy it a bit when we, we began to talk about those unused facade grants, but I'm glad we're keeping them, so good. I'm fine.
Yes, this just allows our staff to make this do the spending, right? This is an opportunity for them to spend if requests come through and we give that authority. Doesn't seem it's going to happen. Sorry.
Okay. So the second part of the supplemental budget relates to a change that I became aware of at a local budget law training this year. For some reason, it hasn't come to light for the last, I don't know, 30 years or so that, that I've been doing this, and, or 20 years, I shouldn't exaggerate. And also, it is something that has been done for the last 10 years with audit approval. So when I found out that it was a situation that we needed to fix, that's why I'm bringing it to you, is that apparently you cannot do a transfer between a separate agency like the Urban Renewal Agency and the city because they're two separate entities, which makes a certain amount of sense. So they have a category called special payments. Monmouth is not the only one who's been doing this differently, but now that we know it behooves us to correct the situation, and so this is another situation where we don't actually have an existing category called special payments in our Urban Renewal Budget, and so we, in order to create that category and move appropriations that we already have in existence in transfers to that category, we have to do a supplemental budget with your approval. And so all, all that this first part of it is, is to create the special payments category. And then the second part of that supplemental budget is to transfer from our transfer line, the 15,000 that we appropriated to pay the general fund for the administration of the Urban Renewal Agency, move those $15,000 in appropriations to the special payments line so we can make the special payment.
More buzz, or are we good to go? All right. And we are in consideration of Resolution Number 35 of the Urban Renewal Agency in its lifetime, a resolution approving a supplementary budget in fiscal year 1920 to use contingencies and creating a new special payments category and transferring appropriations to that new category and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries. There is a motion to that effect in our Urban Renewal Packet. Anyone want to take the bait? Darren, your mic's on, you're up.
Okay, so I move just what you said, and if you'd like me to repeat it, I will do that, otherwise.
Phyllis, do you need him to make the full motion? I think so, Darren, because it has dollar values, and the title that I was reading is the resolution title did not have dollar values.
Great, I will do that then. I move adoption of Resolution Number 35 approving a supplemental budget for 30,000 for contingencies in fiscal year 1920 and creating a new special payments category, then transferring 15,000 appropriations to that new category and directing the finance director to make appropriate transfer entries.
Thank you, Member Silbernagle. A second to that? Thank you, Member.
Uh, staff.
Cut, cut to Mr. Schinkel on that one. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Let, let Phyllis do a roll call, again, she likes calling us Mister and Ms. and Doctor. We'll let her do that.
That's right. Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Ms. Beltz?
Aye.
Mr. Schinkel?
Yes.
Dr. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Silbernagle?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Ms. Kuntz? I can't hear you.
Sorry.
Ms. Kuntz?
The motion carries. And I voted aye, and the motion carries. So Resolution 35 adopted by the Urban Renewal Agency. And at this point, we will, I will take a motion to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agent.
So moved.
And all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. We are adjourned. We return to the regular session of the Monmouth City Council, and we shall adjourn now to executive session to discuss the aforementioned ORS 192-662A and 2H. So we have another call-in number for the executive session? Or are we just? We're locked.
She's going to lock.
She'll lock the room. Audrey is still with us, and everybody else. We lost Suzanne and Russ. Goodbye to them.
And we're not streaming, correct?
And streaming has stopped. So we are in executive session, and I think the discussion about the